I'm going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is Monday, September 11th, 2023, and we start with the invocation from First Crystal Church.
Good evening. Today being September 11th, let's have a moment of silence before we go into prayer. Holy loving God, we come to you remembering the tragic events that took place 22 years ago today. And we come in hope not in ourselves but in you. As foundations we once thought were secure were shaken. We're reminded of the illusion of security. In remembrance of this tragedy, we give you thanks for your presence in our time of need, and we seek unity with each other and you in spirit and in truth. We pray also that you satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting this evening. Strengthen us as we make decisions that affect this great community. And I pray that we will have a fruitful meeting and allow your spirit of unity and peace to be poured out upon this council and this city. Holy God, guide us so that this meeting can be productive, effective, and decisive. It's in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go, couples.
Almond.
Here.
Burnett. Calgery.
Here.
Comfort.
Here.
Joss.
Here.
Armson.
Here.
Ocean.
Okay. Next item up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to speak before the mayor and city council. Has to keep statements brief, time limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would like to speak today? Seeing done, we'll move on. Next item up is the proclamation signing for the National Day of Service and Remembrance. So there is a proclamation that I'm going to be signing. This has to do with the National Day of Service and Remembrance, and I'll read it at this time. Whereas 22 years ago on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and heroism. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas community organizations, members, and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy. And whereas the Serve America Act, approved by Congress and enacted into law on April 21, 2009, directed September 11th to be observed and recognized as an annual National Day of Service and Remembrance and charged the corporation for national community service with leading this nationwide effort. And whereas participating in services and remembrance activities on September 11th is a positive and respectful way to remember the lives of those lost, pay tribute to those who rose in service, and honor those who continue to serve our country today. And whereas the city of Oskaloosa encourages community members to participate in activities that honor 9/11 victims and heroes by joining together in service projects to meet community needs. Now therefore, I, Mayor David Kretzfeld, proclaim September 11th, 2023, a day of service and remembrance in the city of Oskaloosa, and call upon the people to honor the lives of those lost through participation in community service on this day and throughout the year. And sign this 11th day of September, 2023. So just wanted to document that this is being signed. Next up is the opportunity for recognition of full-time fire department members. Chief Flores, yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've been here a little over a year and a half now as a fire chief in Oskaloosa. Mayor, if you remember our interview back at that time, one of my goals in coming here was to get an EMS service out of the fire department as I had in the time before here. EMS is busier than they've ever been. The calls that they get, it's just they're very taxed. And you know what they have to respond to now. Talked with the other full-timers and they absolutely had 100% desire to, you know, go forward with this vision. Three of the members, Captain Tennyson, Captain Hoy, and firefighter Gliven, have been EMT certified for many years, and they've kept their certification up. One of them, I think Captain Hoy works for, you know, one of the local providers. The other two have kept their certification up all these years. They didn't have to, not using it. The other three, Captain Harrelson, firefighter Myers, and firefighter Hook bought into the idea too. They went through six months of training, came in two nights a week for three to four hours a night. Six months of training to get certified. They all have passed, they're certified. I brought Mike Lang from the hospital. He's in charge of the emergency room and the ambulance. And I talked with Mike my first week here. You know, we both had that. He said, hey, you know, we could, we could use your help. And, you know, I said, it's definitely one of my goals. So I just want to recognize these guys. We're going to start responding with ambulance. It's not going to, we are not in any way looking to take over the ambulance, absolutely not. We're not going to go on every 911 call. There's, they're going to know when they need an extra set of hands. They're going to be able to call us, we're going to be able to respond. Sometimes we'll get there before they will, be able to start right during aid to that victim and person. And, you know, together, I'm sure we will have a great working relationship moving forward. So any questions?
I think it's great.
Absolutely. Is there any kind of a photo that's going to be taken of these gentlemen?
Yes, there is.
Chief, you have to stand up there too, please.
I'm not certified, so I can't. These guys did the work, they, you guys go on in. Shane, Dave.
We're in past class.
What's that?
We're in past class.
You're going to be responding at all. Don't make this harder than it has to be.
Come on down.
And, yeah.
I'm in.
You guys want to go down there too?
Thank you.
Next up is the opportunity to hear recitation from Oskaloosa.
Mayday, Mayor and City Council. At this time, I would like to invite Beth Rostrom on behalf of the Oskaloosa Main Street Iowa Board. Beth.
Thank you, Stu. And it's good to see you, friends of Oskaloosa. I know most of you. Yes, I'm Beth Rostrom, and I've been on the Masca Chain, no, the Masca Main Street Board for several years and in the Masca Chamber Board. And I'm currently the chair of the Economic Vitality Committee. And we have a bunch of coming up. It's going to be an education time to learn about Main Street, what it can do for the community, and what it already has done for the community. We're going to have an event two weeks from tomorrow night at the Legion. Get a free meal, it's going to be a pork chop dinner. And we'll need your RSVPs by the end of this week. And it has what, who you notified for that. We have over 100, 100 businesses in our Main Street district, and I have to thank you for putting us in your budget. You know, we, we work through the chamber, and you include the chamber nicely every year in your budget. And we, we thank you for the dollars that you put into this, to this effort. So that evening, September 26th, you're going to have some slides, some trivia, some, and a meal. And we get educated about the four committees. Economic vitality, I always want to call it environmental vitality. And promotions and design and organization. And right now even with design, we're getting signs approved. You know, the Main Street Iowa has free services. And right now, I, I took a picture of, of a business fund that wanted new signage. I'm able to just email it to Main Street Iowa. They'll make the font, they'll include what the Historic Preservation Commission will look for and send it back to us. Those are the kind of free services we have. We have services that will come into your store and your business retail and, and know the, know how to store the flow in the store and, and window displays, helping with lighting. Also our façades, we can say thank you to our façades because I, I know with the Main Street community, yes, we are, it helped us get along with that. We are going to invite three news, people are going to invite Oski News, KBOE, and The Herald to this event. We're also inviting legislators and city government supervisors. And yes, about 100 here, we're doing physical invitations to them this week. It's also going to be a time where we can meet our new Main Street director. It's going to be Angela Foster, and she begins in the office next week on the 18th. I believe that's all I have unless you have a question for me.
And I would, I would just express gratitude to Main Street as well. Their influence over the years in Oskaloosa has been tremendous. That it's been a good partnership as far as Main Street being able to say, here are the ideas, here are what the best practices are. And that's gone a long ways as far as our facade improvements. And so it's got an influence on the character of the, of the community, and I certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next up is consideration of the consent agenda. These are all items that are routine in nature. They are typically acted on in one motion. I did want to draw attention to items H and I, that these are two payments to SVPA. One of them is for a June 30th invoice, and another one is for an August 31st invoice. And also item K, which is the appointment of Scott Board to the Building Code Board of Appeals. Do you have a motion supporting the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Go, couples.
Motion? Yes. Almond. Calgery.
Yes.
Comfort.
Yes.
Joss.
Yes.
Armson.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next up is the announcement of vacancies. We do have applicants, and for any of our boards and commissions must be 18 years of age and live in Oskaloosa unless there are specific specifications that allow for someone to live outside. Our Airport Commission, we have one vacancy for a term ending December of 2027, and one vacancy for a term ending in December of 2028. The Building Code Board of Appeals, we have three vacancies for Riglin members, one for our ex-official member. And also the Historic Preservation Commission, we have a vacancy for a term ending in December of 2024. And finally, the Board of Adjustments, two vacancies for a term, terms ending in December of 2024. Getting into our regular agenda, first up is a resolution amending Resolution 22.0110. This has to do establishing the use of the American Recovery Plan Act, special funds. So January 18th of 2021, the city council approved the resolution designating use of $1,720,411 in ARCA funds towards sewer and stormwater investments. That resolution did not preclude the council from designating any other uses for the funds in the future. As in Cessy has brought forth two areas of expenditure that have either not been included in the budget or have exceeded the budgeted amounts, staff is seeking an amendment to reallocate a portion of the ARCA funds. So two items requested. First is a $60,000 one for the remaining amount of the Edmondson Playground Contract that was approved on May 15th. That was Resolution 230568. And $75,000 for the remaining amount of the Edmondson Park Drudging Contract. That was approved August 7th, 2023, Resolution number 2308103. Total is $135,000. And these numbers include some contingency funds which will remain designated for the sewer and stormwater investments if they're unused on those, on these projects. Use of funds must be determined by December 31st of 2024. Funds must be expended by December 31st of 2026. Staff is requesting city council amend the possible expenditures of ARCA funds for the aforementioned infrastructure projects and is recommending approval. Do you have a motion of support?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So the balance after items one and two are taken out, the balance, the rest of the balance is still going towards the stormwater sewer?
Or revert back to the stormwater.
Okay.
Other comments? Go, couples.
Almond?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Joss?
Yes.
Armson?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B, is to consider an ordinance amending Title 17 regarding zoning. This enacts the new zoning code text and map for the city of Oskaloosa and its two mi, two miles of extraterritorial jurisdiction. This is the third reading. Pursuant to Oskaloosa Municipal Code Section 2.56.170, Planning and Zoning Commission has prepared an update to the city zoning code. This effort was guided by consultant and staff under the goals and recommendations of the Plan Oski Comprehensive Plan. And the current zoning code is 23 years old. General goals include modernizing the ordinance, make, make it consistent with other plans, address any gaps, providing flexibility, meeting legal requirements, streamlining approval processes, and extending the zoning to the city's two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Since the second reading on August 21st, an adjustment was made to the apiaries, which has to do with beekeeping section at 17.06.120A3C. It includes provisions for lots smaller than a quarter acre. Public hearings were held on July 5th and August 7th. Planning and Zoning Commission and staff are recommending approval of the final reading. Do you have a motion of support for this? Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Go, couples.
Calgery?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Joss?
Yes.
Armson?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on, next is a report on construction and development activities. Sean Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening. So over the last few weeks, staff has been working on our annual report for fiscal year 23, which ended June 30th of this year. And we thought it would be a good idea to give you an update on construction and development activity, to see some trends that we're seeing, areas where we may need to focus more activities, and report back to you on that. I've got about eight slides here. I'll show you information, actually quite a bit of information. And again, we're focusing all on fiscal year 23, which ended June 30th and started July 1st of 2022. And then we're also going to take a look back at, at years prior to that, generally in comparison, so you can see how things are going. Also pictured here, you can see in the background is Musco's Facility Shop that's under construction on Third Avenue West. Okay, so this slide is for building permit activity. There's a lot of information here, but you do have a handout here in front of you. We'll also get into this and touch on more of the highlights that you see here. But generally speaking, on the left-hand side, you can see all the building permit types, whether it's residential, commercial, or miscellaneous type permits. Beyond that, to the right of that, we've got the number of permits issued, both for fiscal year 23 and then before that fiscal year 2022, uh, 22. Then permit fees for those same two years, and those are fees collected in our department. And then lastly, the construction value of the work that's, that's part of those permits that are issued. And construction value is intended to be a measure of the cost of the building materials for that work and also the labor involved in that work. And some takeaways here, some notable takeaways. If you look to the totals at the bottom, you can see that we issued just a few more permits at 404 for fiscal year 23, which was more than we issued in, in 2022 at 390. The permit fees, you can see there nearly doubled in that time from '22. And then construction value more than doubled in that time from 2022. All right, so here's another look at the permit activity. This table shows both the number of permits issued and the number of permits fees collected. And this looks back not two years, but 10 years in this graph. So I'll take you through it a little bit. You can see those color bars. The blue bars are the plumbing permits. The yellow or light orange is mechanical. Electrical is in a darker shade of orange. And then our building permits are in green. Demolition permits kind of hiding there along the bottom in gray. And then the building permit fees collected is that, that thin blue line that's hovering toward the top of those bars. And you can see a trend line, how it, how it adjusts over the years. And we, we, generally speaking, we have a trend line going up over this, this 10-year period of time. If you look at the trade permits, plumbing might be down a little bit, mechanical about flat, electrical going up a little bit, demolition's going down a little bit, which I think is a good thing. But you can see a solid positive upward trend in building permits issued and also in permit fees collected. You did get a little bit more turbulence there in those last three or four years, and you might be able to guess why with COVID. Because the building materials went way up and labor was hard to find, generally speaking. We'll get into this a little bit more as well. Here's another look at the fees collected for that same 10-year period. And again, you can see that when we did have a slight drop there in fiscal year 22 with 82,000 collected, it generally kept things flat, you know, or maybe you had, or suddenly blow our average for that period. But we didn't really see much of a regression here in Oskaloosa compared to some of the communities. Then you can see that solid jump again in this last fiscal year to 154. All right, so here's another look at the construction valuation. And this line tends to follow those permit fees. But you can see again that, that upward trend. But there were two years which really stood out in fiscal years 19 and 20. We had two major construction projects in those two fiscal years. Anybody want to guess what, what one or both of those were?
I have no clue.
Which one?
YMCA.
That's correct. YMCA was the biggest one there in fiscal year 20, part of that 399, a $39 million number. Anybody want to guess the other one?
MSO expansion.
Good guess, but that, that was not it. It was the Fairfield Inn, which was in the fiscal year 19. So those were those are the two main projects, which increased those numbers pretty substantially. So these were our top 10 commercial and industrial projects, and this is just for fiscal year 2023. And all of these, I think you're familiar with at some point. Of course, we've got Cloud, we've got Musco's Facility Shop. We've got the Community School District. They were doing some pretty major renovations, some slight expansions, and a lot of mechanical work in their buildings. Of course, the Clean Laundry Building, Wood Preservers New Building, Domino's still under construction. We've got Brown Seating and Cooling on South 11th. And then the second phase of Musco's Facility Shop, which was the second building on that property. And then lastly, a new press box out at the Lacy Complex for Wayne Penn. So those 10 projects made a $15 million of our 29, excuse me, $21 million construction valuation for this fiscal year. So you're probably wondering, okay, where are we at with residential? Well, perhaps not as good there, but we're not, we're not dropping. So we're, we're staying flat. This is a number for the last, or a table showing the last five years for residential activity. Now, if you look at single-family and two-family, we tend to average about 15 units a year. If you add in multifamily, we're about 20 units a year. And we were pretty consistent this year as we were the years prior. Single-family, seven new homes. We had three new duplex buildings go up, for a total of six units. We haven't had any apartment units built for the last two years. If you look down the table there, the multifamily, those units are mostly the Burrell Apartments, which are in, three of the planned five buildings for that property. There is a lot of activity going on behind the scenes by both staff and council members, as you know, trying to encourage more residential development here. Our housing study shows that we are lacking, we need about 1,000 new units. And we have a pretty substantial goal of building at least 50 units a year to help us meet that need. So 350 new units by 2030, we're going to need to more than double our output to reach that number. So we're talking to developers and trying to encourage them to come to Oskaloosa. All right, so some of you may have heard us talk about this before, the Building Code Effectiveness Rating Schedule, or BSAGS rating. This is something that's done every five years by the Insurance Services Office, non-laws embarrassed. Our evaluation was started almost two years ago and just completed here recently. They had some staff turnover on their end. But we are happy to report that Oskaloosa is a Class Four for Building Code Plan Review and Inspections. That is higher than the state average, which is Class Five for commercial and Class Six for residential. And you can see the breakdown there in the table that left. So the vast majority of the communities in Iowa are Class Four or Class Five, some in Class Six. I, I think a, a community of our size would have a very difficult time reaching a Class Three. And that's simply because the number of people we have on staff. If we had more inspectors and a greater percentage of the city budget devoted to building plan review and inspections, we might be able to reach Class Three. We're very close, but we're just not there. But this is something you can be very proud of. And how this impacts communities, if any of our insurers use this rating, and this is optional, but if they use this rating to help set their policy costs for insurance, it can help lower their premium costs to ensure their properties by having this rating. All right, and the last slide is rental housing inspections. We tend to report on this every year. We're still sitting at about 1,700 units that are registered on about 800 properties. 91% of our units are now passing with the first inspection. This is something we are very proud of. We just entered our seventh year, and, and they're looking back. You can see we did not have that amount when we first started in 2017. Where 54% of our units pass that first inspection. So I think this is something that we as a community can be very proud of, to have that, that much of a success rate for rental inspections. And thank you to the council for helping push that through. And then I don't have a slide on this, but I do want to comment briefly about vacant building registrations. This is something that's new for our community. The deadline for registrations is November 17th, and still we're not there yet. We're still estimating about 100 units that will be vacant or partially vacant, and then will be required to register under that ordinance. We still just received one registration so far. But we are getting calls weekly, questions weekly about the program. We have sent out two courtesy letters, reminders to property owners so far, and a third will go out in October, and we'll keep working on that to push that forward. So making progress there as well. Any questions?
On that, after that, I mean, is there a drop dead you have to have in town?
Yep, yep. So November 17th will be the deadline. And if, if we believe that they are qualified under the ordinance and must register, then we will proceed to the next step, which could, hopefully doesn't come to that, but could come to enforcement.
Slide before this one, you talked about being the Class Four. When this, did that become effective? Or what I'm wondering is, five years ago, were we at Class Five, and now we're at Class Four? What was the date that, that ray that happened?
Yeah, so when this was finalized, this was effective just a couple of weeks ago. We, we have been at Class Four since I have been here before. Maybe we briefly dropped to a Class Five, but we think that was an error on their end, was some turnover, where they didn't review all the materials that we had submitted. So generally, Oskaloosa has been at Class Four. I would say for at least the last, hmm, at least the last seven or eight years.
Okay. This is encouraging. So thank you very much, Sean.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And indeed, this has to do with the discussion regarding purchasing and placing flags around the city square. Chief Bond, is this something you're interested in?
Maybe, maybe. So once again, I'll go back to the town I was at before here, and one of the things that I was involved in was BMW put flags up around the square on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Flag Day, and Veterans Day. Time, you know, passed and the membership grew older. They weren't getting their new members. A time came where they said they weren't going to be able to put flags up at all because they just didn't have the volunteers anymore, which I couldn't believe. Facebook was available then, we used it, we got all the, you know, support we needed. And after that was over, guess who got put in charge of making sure flags got put up around the square four times a year, which I was glad to do. One thing that I don't see or haven't seen in Oskaloosa. So I reached out. So I reached out to R.D. Keith with the Optimist Club. He helped us get a flag for the fire department, the thirty by twenty that you will see from time to time. They actually donated that to the fire department. He made me aware Knoxville Avenue of Flags. Knoxville's not doing that anymore, so they were selling their trailer and their flags. Burlington Optimist Club bought the trailer, but they do not need the flags. So they had a hundred and twenty-five flags that they're making available to us at a cost, which the cost has nothing to do with the city. I'm just here getting your blessing to be able to put those around the city square. I've been working with Matt from Public Works. I measured the area last week. We have a rough idea of how many we'll need just to do the perimeter of the square to start with. I'd like to go in toward the center of the square over time if we get the support to do so. But we'll have to do some locating to make sure we're staying away from any of the utilities that might be in there. The club from Burlington, it's an insert that you put down in the ground. The club from Burlington, I was talking to her. She said, when you get to that point, let me know. I'll bring five or six people. We will help putting those in the ground, which I thought was very nice of her to do. So I've already reached out to one of the civic organizations. The price that we're going to look at getting the flags for, I've already got half of that cost just from that club. And they said they will keep pursuing that grant that they can get for that every year for this project. They were very, very much a flag-oriented club, so, yes.
Are you still going to be working with the Optimist Club?
Yes, they're going to be a part of this.
Does the Optimist also kind of subcontract out? I'm the president of the Lions Club, so we take certain districts.
Yep.
And that, and so I think it'd be nice to...
All of the, it seems like all the service organizations have something to do with the flag and, you know, the...
It'd be nice to sort of get some recognition, you know, for all that work. It's a really good, good program in that. But we do need, we've been joking, now any new Lions member needs to have a truck because we do need somebody to carry those flags around. So I'd like to encourage, so, get a trailer or something like that for the, all of the groups, that would be great.
Yep.
Yeah, so my understanding would be that this would be separate from the service organizations, that, in the sense that they wouldn't be the ones putting the flags up. It would be Fire Department and volunteers working.
They won't be, they won't be Fire Department, so to speak, if they want to volunteer to help. What I did in Fairfield, I went to the schools because kids need volunteer hours so that they were readily available all the time. Then you just put a post on Facebook. A lot of the veterans will come and, you know, just, if nothing else, watch it happen.
Just Chief, I think that the forest and check for, if I'm wrong, that tells children or the kids from the school.
Student council.
You also...
High school student council.
Student council helps put all the flags on the forest. I'm sure you can reach out and...
It's not, it's not as easily done, though. I mean, there's certain places you've got to find a pole, you can get that, and then the water, you know. So I think we might want to not just have free-range volunteers, but have them working with the guidance of these other service parks. Because otherwise, you could take a long time to put out the flags that with some organizational skills, it wouldn't take long at all.
So when you put the inserts in the ground, there will be a white dot sprinkling it on the sidewalk in that area. So around, you will have the areas because over time, you're going to have to go out with a drill and a one-inch, you know, auger, so to speak. And over, they mow how many times a year. Dirt and sediment gets in there, you get that cleaned out or it fills with water. I went like this with a pole before, and it's not pleasant, the stuff that comes out of those holes.
I've had the opportunity to put them out for the Optimist Club, the Boy Scouts, and those, I mean, those holders that are placed in the ground, I mean, it's pretty much permanent, and most of them have cap in them. And sometimes they are hard to find.
Yes, exactly.
I searched for one in Eleventh Avenue, lasted for about twenty minutes one day, but I finally found it. They can just, the markings marked on the curb and everything. I think it's a great thing. And again, if we can work with the local service clubs, I think that's, that's great, it's a great fundraiser for them. But I'd love to see the flags around the square.
It does have a nice wow effect. But I would just say, don't make it too undue hardship.
Yeah, that's why we're doing just the perimeter to start with. And like I said, I just needed your blessing to keep moving forward with the project. We're not there yet, but I think there's, I'm hoping that we can have flags around the square for Veterans Day in November, so.
Oh, nice.
The rough placement of the poles would be, how far in from the sidewalk would you guess it to be?
I'll be working with Matt on that because there will be some places where it'll have to be around stuff. It'll still look good, you know, I think with the whole setup because we're placing, it's a three-by-five flag that we're placing every sixteen apart. So, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah. About a hundred and twenty-five flags is what I have estimated, give or take a few, just to do the perimeter.
Okay.
So then, I think in Fairfield, before we were done, there was almost four under when we went all the way into the grandstand, so.
And then where are these flags going to be stored? Do you have to store flags properly?
Right now, the Elsas, the Elsas said we could store them there.
Okay, or they're vacant floors?
Yep, so still got some groups to talk to. And I just wanted to make sure it was going to be okay with you guys before we go farther with, you know, getting funds and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I don't see any opposition. This sounds like a great project.
Appreciate it.
That gets us to the end of the regular agenda. Reports from city staff, city manager.
Nothing.
Okay. Amy, nothing to say, clear? Okay, city attorney, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. City council members, let's see. We would start with Steve, but he's not here. So, Rhonda?
Um, no.
Roger, thank you. Okay.
So Oscar from Atri, as Beth stated earlier, we have hired a new director, and we're excited that Angela Foster is going to be joining our team. She was the secretary for the president at William Penn for, I believe, around ten years. So she's done a lot of good volunteer work with the Commerce Committee, and so I think she's going to be a great addition.
Mary, Charles?
Chief Pinky, thank you to your department for assisting with the lockdown drills at the school district.
Joe, please.
Well, I'll brag for the rest of them. We had a very nice time at the thriving community's reception and that. It was nice to see Stanton was there, Manning, Preston, and some communities that I've been involved in. So anyway, I had a great lot of fun as well as doing work. And Rhonda was there, Bob, the mayor, and Janet were there. So I think we represented Oskaloosa quite nicely. I kind of wish I could have heard more about the conference. I heard there was a lot of things going on. And I definitely would like to see a lot more, you know, affordable housing in this community. And so much stems from, you know, affordable housing and having a safe place to live. If you don't have that, you know, a lot of other things just can't happen. So anyway, it was a very good experience. It was nice to see everybody in their cocktail attire.
And I wanted to comment on a letter I received today. This is from the Greater Des Moines Partnership, dated August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three, addressed to myself. Dear Mayor Kritzfeld, on behalf of the Greater Des Moines Partnership, I would like to extend our congratulations to you, City Manager Amal Altair, and members of the City Council on the recent groundbreaking for the new Trio Entertainment Venue. What a grand and exciting addition to the city of Oskaloosa. We understand what a quality of life amenity such as this could do to strengthen the community and the region overall. We also understand that these projects don't come together easily without strong vision and leadership. You have the perfect ingredients, a great community, strong manufacturing base, and a college with a healthy in-person enrollment. The entertainment venue is frosting on the cake to attract and retain business, workforce, students, and your citizen base. We applaud your innovative approach to vision planning. Sincerely, Tiffany Toscheck, President and CEO of the Greater Des Moines Partnership. It's nice to see we're getting noticed. So with that, the next item up is the opportunity to go into closed session. This is to consider holding a closed session under Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five point one point C to discuss strategy with legal counsel on a matter presently in litigation or in which litigation is imminent, where disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the city's position. So acting pursuant to the requirements of the Iowa Public Information Board, I, Mayor David Kritzfeld, state and indicate that the closed session to follow is to discuss strategy in a pending matter with legal counsel or the city of Oskaloosa, Iowa, acting pursuant to the contract existing between the parties. Do you have a motion of support to go into closed session?
Some. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Vote, please.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We're going to go into closed session. We are back in open session. So what we have before us is the proposal, an agreement that has been proposed to the city for completion of the landscaping work to be done on the outside of the YMCA building. Fifty-three thousand dollars is the total expense. One half to be done once we have partial completion. The remainder due when the job is completed and approved for meeting the contract specifications. Do you have a motion of support for that? Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Sub move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.